Good evening. I'm up for the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, October 17th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Thanks, Councilor Thiessen.
I move that council receive the minutes of the last city council meeting held Monday, October 3rd, 2016.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Any errors or omissions? Thank you. Thanks very much. I called to order on our regular city council meeting and I forgot that it's our once-annual organizational meeting that we could do. Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn for that catch. We don't typically have "O Canada" before the regular organizational meeting, so I appreciate that. So this is actually our organizational meeting. We have a number of reports that we do once a year to appoint council members to committees and to set the agenda and, sorry, the schedule for council meetings for the year. The first is item 2.1, the Mayor's Recommendations for Appointments of Deputy Mayor, Councilor Rice.
Move that council adopt the Mayor's Recommendations for Deputy Mayor.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. The next is the adoption of appointments to standing committees of council. Council, you'll notice that there is no change from our previous organizational committee. Now that we're in a four-year term, that halfway point seems to be the right point. So everybody will get two years on their current appointments. Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the Mayor's Recommendation for Appointments to Standing Committees of Council as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate? Everybody's relatively happy on their committees, I guess? Fair enough. Okay, I'll call for the vote quickly before you answer. Thank you. That motion carries. Next is the Mayor's Recommendations for Appointments to Boards and Committees of the External Agencies to the City. And again, I don't think you'll see any change except for a couple of committees where the city is, no longer has, council members representing us. Councilor Clayton.
Mayor Given, I move that council approve the recommendations as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And finally, is the schedule of council and standing committee meetings incorporating a break during the summer, over the Christmas, and obviously incorporating the FCM. We won't have to worry about AUMA this year and working around that because we'll be heading into the municipal election. I think the calendar recognizes all that. Have a motion to adopt the schedule. Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've moved council approve the schedule of council and standing committee meetings as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the schedule? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay. Thank you very much, council and to everybody watching. Councilor Radburn, thanks for that catch. We can all stand and do the National Anthem again. Just been, no, we don't have to do it again. I think we've started off our meeting the appropriate way. Though I will call to order the regular city council meeting, and I would look for an adoption of the agenda of previous council meeting minutes. Councilor Thiessen.
I would move that council approve and accept the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, October 3rd, 2016.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Now I feel like we're back on track. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to catch before we adopt them? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Look for the adoption of the agenda, and there was one with item that administration had intended to withdraw, Councilor Rice. Do you have that one? Okay, Councilor Rice.
I move that council approve the agenda with the elimination of item 7.3.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So item 7.3 was intended to be a public hearing for the West Industrial ASP and Bylaw C-1322 Airport Industrial Outline Plan. This is being withdrawn, and should it come back in the future, it would have to undergo the same public advertising requirements as it had gone through this time. So there'd be the same public notification required of the proponent. So anybody that was wishing to speak to that would be informed before it would come back again. Any other discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. We have a couple of delegations that let us know ahead of time that they were going to come, and the first is Superintendent Don McKenna, our new officer in charge at the RCMP Grand Prairie Beaver Lodge detachment. Superintendent McKenna, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Start off by saying how pleased I am, or how pleased, honored I am to have been chosen as the next superintendent, and I've been in Grand Prairie for the last two years. And it's, of course, where my home is, and my children go to high school. And I'm certainly a superhero at home now because my kids get to finish high school. They get to fit with their, with their friends. But I know, and I, again, wanted to thank the support from the city for, for my selection.
Absolutely. Well, we certainly appreciate you being here. I want to congratulate you on your new appointment. We understand that you've been an integral part of the operations side at the detachment and involved in previous strategic planning efforts, and are intimately knowledgeable about the local needs with respect to safety and policing. And I don't know if any of the council members had any hard questions for you, but if nothing else, I certainly want to extend my congratulations.
Thank you.
I know both Western District are supportive of your appointment and are going to be supporting you, and I'm sure the entire detachment well is, as will the organization of the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I am very much involved in the community as well, and I have to say that it's very nice now that crime is certainly ebbing in the community, and from last year's levels down 21%, and we're at the same levels of crime that we had in 2011.
Excellent.
And I appreciate the council's support. The extra members certainly made quite a large difference for us.
Thanks very much, Superintendent McKenna. Councilor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, Superintendent. Just wondering if you could give us an idea of how recruitment is going for the RCMP officers, and if you could just give us some details on that?
Certainly. Recruitment is something that we, we, it's an ongoing, it's ongoing. And where we look to, we look to recruit from the general population, but also some specific populations. We've brought people up, recruiters up from Edmonton for recruiting the general population. We've also reached out to the Somali community and looking for young Somalis who may be interested in joining the RCMP as well. Recently, there's been some changes nationally as far as recruiting. At one time, it was mandatory to have a Canadian citizenship, and now that, that requirement's been waived, and so people with landed immigrant status. There are a lot of people who, who've lived in Canada pretty much their entire lives, however they've been born elsewhere, but they haven't obtained their Canadian citizenship. And for all intensive purposes, they are Canadians or naturalized Canadians, however, that has been one thing that has barred them from joining the RCMP. And that has now been, now changed. And so landed immigrants can, can join the RCMP. And other police forces have been doing this for quite some time. If you go to Edmonton or Calgary, you'll certainly hear a lot of British accents, people from the United Kingdom who've come over to work.
Councilor Radburn?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Councilor. Go ahead. Didn't realize you had a second. Go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
Just sorry, just follow up on that. In terms of the getting off of local officers here, how has that been going?
Oh, local officers. It's been going very well. We've had quite a few recruits from DEPO. I, over the last few days, we've promoted several people within the, at the detachment. We've promoted three corporals, and we're going to be backfilling them with recruits. We have recruits coming quite a bit, and recruits are very enthusiastic. And after about a year and a half, they, they're very, they can become very good investigators, and this is a great learning environment because in this detachment, members can work on rural, they can work on the general investigation section, they can work on the city watches, and it's quite a variety for them. Once members leave Grand Prairie, they're very well-rounded constables.
Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So has a decision been made on your right-hand person?
My replacement. I've, we've, some recommendations have gone forward. Unfortunately, it's gone to something called Executive Officer Development and Resourcing, and they will have the final word on the next person. And there were some local candidates who would be very good for that position. And I've told them they've had big shoes to fill.
Some of them know you.
Some of them know me, yes. That's right. And they have little feet. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thanks for being here, and congratulations, Mr. McKenna. Good promotion, and a good man for the job. Just a question in regards to recruitment. I was wondering, because I know in the past we had some issues with vacancies positions. How many vacancies do we currently have on the force right now?
We've just created several vacancies with those three promotions. I could get you an exact number. I don't have that off the top of my head, but our vacancy pattern is much lower than it was last year. And our, I really have to say, I do appreciate the support of the council, and we've, we are a priority for the, our division staffing to fill those positions.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Superintendent McKenna. Certainly appreciate you starting off by coming to council. I appreciate your intent in being here tonight to demonstrate to the community that you're ready to serve. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next delegation that let us know ahead of time that they wish to come was Ms. Lorraine Nordstrom with Conflict Resolution Day. I'm going to be making a proclamation just after the delegation portion of the agenda. Lorraine, come on down, and you can maybe just let council know a little bit about conflict resolution and about your organization, so that council has some context for the proclamation that we'll be making in just a couple of minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. This is a little scarier than I thought it was going to be, actually. First of all, I'd just to say good evening to Mayor Given and council members. My name is Lorraine Nordstrom, and I'm here representing the Peace Circle of Mediators. The Peace Circle of Mediators is a community of practice. It's a loosely formed organization, and we envision helping people realize the potential beyond conflict. We're here to request that October 20th be proclaimed Conflict Resolution Day. And the reason we're asking for this is that conflict affects all of us. Conflict has many forms, and it can be somewhere between a sudden flare-up of irritation as to serious, a flare-up of irritation to as serious as to involve the court system. Unfortunately, conflict does have a nasty habit of escalating. We're not taught in school how to deal with conflict, other than hearing old adages such as "Sticks and stones may break my bones, and names will never hurt me," or little pieces of advice such as "be kind." But even kind people run into conflict. Over the centuries, our society has increasingly leaned on the court system or other outside authorities to deal with conflict. If we have a dispute with a neighbor, our getting divorced or cannot come to an agreement with an associate, our go-to place has often been litigation. Employers fire employees, employees sue employers, and often the root cause of dissatisfaction on both sides lies in the murky world of communication gone bad. The resulting conflict can add years of stress and unhappiness to lives on all sides. Conflict Resolution Day was created in 2005 to raise public awareness of creative and peaceful means of resolving conflict. Sometimes the overwhelming urge to hire the best lawyer and fight the right fight ends up by paying costs that you didn't anticipate, including destroyed relationships, rising legal fees, and drawn-out timeframes that often keep escalating the passion of both sides to win no matter what. Conflict Resolution Day seeks to bring awareness to the fact that it's not the conflict that matters, but it's how we handle it. Conflict can truly be an opportunity for creativity. One tried and true method of bringing out the creativity in conflict is mediation. Mediation is a process where both parties are brought back to the table, treated with dignity and respect, and given an opportunity to share their points of view with each other in order to design their own solutions, all with the assistance of a chartered mediator. New ways are explored in how to communicate with each other in order to expand their understanding of the other's perspective, and then using their newfound understandings together craft the best possible solution for the situation they are facing. This year's theme for Conflict Resolution Day is "Let's Talk ADR." ADR sometimes stands for Alternative Dispute Resolution because it describes options other than going to court. But as ADR has become mainstream, we use the term "appropriate dispute resolution" to describe all the choices available to prevent and manage conflict in a non-adversarial way, including mediation, arbitration, and restorative practices. In partnership with Grand Prairie Council for Lifelong Learning and the Peace Circle of Mediators, we are offering three one-hour workshops on managing hostile communications on October 20th. The first workshop is located at the courthouse in the mediation room and starts at 9:30 in the morning. The second workshop is at the Lion's Learning Center, starting at 12 noon and includes a light lunch. And our final workshop starts at 3:30, also at the courthouse mediation room. Registration is required for any of these workshops by calling 780-539-6077. That's 780-539-6077. For these reasons and others, we have come before mayor and council to respectfully request that October 20th, 2016 be proclaimed as Conflict Resolution Day in Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Mr. Nordstrom. Certainly appreciate that. And obviously, this request was made in advance, so I'm happy to follow up. Item 6.1 on our agenda is actually the proclamation, but there may be some questions from council members for you. Councilor Rice.
My question is actually to managers. You're back. Is this not the posters that we brought back and put in all the city facilities?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we're already making all of our staff aware of it. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions for the delegation? Don't see anybody else ringing in. So, Ms. Nordstrom, thanks very much for being here and representing Conflict Resolution Day. And as I said, just a little bit later on after we close the delegation portion of the agenda, I'll get to the proclamation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that was here for the delegation portion of our agenda without, except for those who may be here to speak to a public hearing? Is there anybody else here for the delegation portion of the agenda? So seeing nobody coming forward, we'll close the delegation portion of the agenda, and we'll move on to item 6.1, and that is the proclamation for Conflict Resolution Day. So as we heard, the importance of alternate or appropriate dispute resolution processes, it's my honor to make this proclamation. Whereas Conflict Resolution Day is an international celebration held annually on the third Thursday in October, and whereas on this day we highlight the dispute resolution processes that empower individuals, families, organizations, and communities to prevent and manage conflict in a way that meets the needs of all parties involved, and whereas ADR, or appropriate dispute resolution, encompasses mediation, arbitration, facilitation, collaborative decision-making, restorative practices, and other creative ways to resolve disputes, now therefore I, Mayor Bill Given of the City of Grand Prairie, do, on behalf of the city council and citizens, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2016 as Conflict Resolution Day. So it was my pleasure to do that. And Lorraine, thank you so much for being here and sharing with council and with the community a little bit about the other forms of conflict resolution that are available to our community. Certainly, we see it at city council from time to time as neighbors come into conflict with one another. We see that in requests for service to the RCMP and to our bylaw department, and oftentimes it drives city legislation when neighbors try to resolve conflicts by asking the city to approve something through a bylaw. So certainly, an approach to this that's relies on the individuals involved to work collaboratively together is the appropriate way to follow things, and it's my pleasure to make that proclamation. Thank you so much. It's Councilor Rice, and I will, actually, Lorraine, I will pass this proclamation to you if you'd like to come up and accept it. Okay, now councils, we go through the agenda. I will expect you to take the principles of all, you know, appropriate dispute resolution to heart, if it gets a little testy around the council table. We'll try to work our way through that. City Manager, City Manager Greg can be our facilitator, should we need. We'll move into item 7.1, which is Public Hearing for Bylaw C-1256B Transportation System Bylaw Amendment. I would call this public hearing to order, and we'll look to administration for an introduction. Ms. Donnelly? All right. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the Provincial City Transportation Act requires the city council to establish a transportation system bylaw, and the city currently has a bylaw which has become outdated as a result of annexation, as well as other changes that have occurred with road construction and that sort of thing. The, what we've brought forward to is an amendment to the bylaw which replaces Schedule A in the bylaw with a new list and Schedule B with a new map. These reflect current city boundaries, current registered roads, as well as current adopted documents within the city. The bylaw, the proposed amendment bylaw meets the act requirements. It's been advertised according to the public hearing requirements, and I'm here to recommend that the three readings be given.
Thanks very much, Ms. Donnelly. Would ask council if they have any questions for administration at this time. Councilor Rice?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. Okay, no questions from Councilor Rice the second. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and so I'd ask if there's anyone here to speak to this public hearing. Is there anyone who came tonight intending to speak to the Transportation System Bylaw Amendment? I'll ask one last time if there's anyone here to speak to Bylaw C-1265B. Seeing none, I'll ask council one last time if you have any questions for administration. And seeing none, I, Councilor Rice.
I move first reading of Bylaw C-1265B, the Transportation System Bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Rice?
I move second reading of Bylaw C-1265B.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Councilor Rice?
I move that we have third reading for Bylaw C-1265B.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So a motion to have third and final reading here tonight must pass unanimously. If the motion does not pass unanimously, then third reading would come back at the subsequent council meeting. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third reading? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Councilor Rice?
I move third reading of Bylaw C-1265B, the Transportation System Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. A motion for a third and final reading. Any discussion or debate? Just before we vote, I'd like to thank administration. This is one of those pieces of work that have come up as a result of annexation, in large part, obviously other reasons. But I appreciate administration's approach to tagging them off one at a time as we go through all the documents that are required to be updated due to annexation. So thank you so much for getting this one off the books. Call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to item 7.2, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-65, Central Commercial District, DC-20 Site-Specific Direct Control District. I'd call this public hearing to order, and look to administration for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. An application has been submitted to amend the land use bylaw by adopting a site-specific direct control district to allow for a car wash and a land mat at 9720-97 Avenue. I would like to start by giving a quick overview of the location. So the subject site is located, as shown here on the map, on the northwest corner of this road and 97 Avenue. It is located at the southeast corner of downtown as well. As we can see on the map, there are defined uses on the east, as well as the west side of this road, and we have a couple of pictures showing this that will be displayed later on. Also, it's important to mention that the site is part of the Downtown Enhancement Plan, which is adopted by, through Bylaw C-1130, and according to the Downtown Enhancement Plan, the site is designated for commercial, general commercial uses, mainly oriented towards vehicular movement or clients. So, and the first picture here shows the site as it is now. The site is unoccupied, so it has a building that has been unoccupied since 2013, the time when the gas station was decommissioned. Since then, the site has been vacant, and there had not been any uses. It is important here to mention that such a site is considered a bound field, which means a site that had commercial or industrial uses and might be perceived to have contaminants on the site. It doesn't mean it is contaminated, but it's perceived to be so. So as a result, any future use will only be given or issued a development permit if, first of all, an assessment, and second, a mediation studies are completed and are approved by the development officers. As a result, because obviously this is expensive, such sites remain vacant or underutilized for a long time. Just the second picture we have here gives an idea about the east side of this road. As you can see, it has mainly offices and clinics, and it's geared towards vehicles. So it's not, it's highly unlikely it would be accessed by pedestrians. So the proposed use, which is for a land mat as well as a four-bay car wash, is consistent with the existing uses in the adjacent area. So just like to explain the rationale for opting for a direct control. As it is now, some of the existed, existing land uses, such as the arterial commercial, CA, or other industrial uses, could potentially accommodate such a use. However, the issue with this is they also allow for industrial areas, sorry, uses that may be, that are not compatible with either the surrounding area or the vision as laid out in the Downtown Enhancement Plan. So if for whatever reason the business doesn't proceed, or if in the future it is decommissioned, someone, if we, a zone to CA, for example, uses that might not be compatible could be, could be materialized on the site. Also, one of the advantages of Also, one of the advantages of DC, direct control, is that it gives the ability to work on a specific, the specific development standards. So in our case, that's very relevant because the site is located immediately to the south of a CN line. So to ensure that there will be a reasonable buffer between the CN line and whatever building or building extension might be in the future, a 6.1-meter setback is put in the DC as part of the development standards. So public notification was undertaken in accordance with the municipal government act, as well as the land use bylaw. We did not receive any feedback from the public. At the conclusion, to conclude, administration recommends that council give third readings to bylaw C-1260-65. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any questions for administration at this time? Council Rice?
Okay, you know, it's hard to tell from the picture, and maybe, maybe they dug the pumps all up, but wasn't that area totally paved, and does that not mitigate the brownfields designation?
So, Mr. Mayor, I know that site assessment, as well as mitigation studies, have been conducted since 2013, and actually, the applicant submitted these studies, which are being viewed now by the development officers, as well as our environmental stewardship department.
Thank you.
Councilor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've got a couple of questions here while lead. The first question is in regards to the remediation costs. It says in the report that it would be covered by the owner or the previous tenant of the site, Sheldon Canada. Is there any way the city can enforce that besides just the permitting? Who really is responsible for paying for the remediation if there is contamination there?
So, Mr. Mayor, as it is now in our land use bylaw, we have the same clause that you just mentioned, is that basically the city does not pay for this, and whatever effort was done must be submitted to the development officer before the issuance of a development permit, and it's up to when they actually analyze the results. As we speak now, they are the main authority to decide if what has been done meets the provincial requirements or not.
That answers my question, yeah, but I did have another one, is in regards to the vehicle wash major and vehicle wash minor. How big was the, was the car wash that was there previously? How many, how many bays and stalls?
So, Mr. Mayor, and the applicant here to correct me if I'm mistaken, I am under the impression it's the same, it's for a car wash.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Council Thieson. I don't see any other questions for administration at this time, so I will ask if there's anyone here who wish to speak to this public hearing? Is there anyone who wish to speak in support of the proposed change from CC to DC-20? Sure, I see one gentleman out in the audience. If you could make your way to the presenter's table and introduce yourself for council and for our recording secretary, so they might know your name. I would ask you to...
I'm here on behalf, I'm the applicant on behalf of the developer, and I would be, Mr. Albatri had done very, very good explanation of what is happening on the site, and I think with the, with the brownfields, I'm very pleased that it has been, I mean, it was all remedied, it was all dug out, and we're just waiting for the, I guess, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. It, it's ready to, ready to go with the developer. He wants to get that lot all paved. There won't be gas pumps going in there, so if it was a concern of more traffic coming and going, it's the same building that's been there since, for a good 20, 25 years, so.
Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else. I see one. Okay, Council O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Pleased to see you here, sir. Any more development, actually, or are they just going to use the existing building?
They'll just be using the, Mr. Mayor, to, to, they'll just be using the existing building, but they will be doing extensive facade, painting, everything that's in the development permit. They'll be doing that all, as, if weather prevails, they'll be doing the outside work and any painting. So it'll be brought up to downtown BRZ standards, or Helen will probably be over there pointing the finger.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then, Mr. Crokin, thanks very much for being here tonight.
Thanks, Mayor, council.
Questions? Was there anybody else who wish to speak to this land use bylaw amendment, C-1260-65, to convert to a site-specific direct control district? Is there anybody else who wish to speak? I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll ask council one last time if you had any questions for administration before I close the public hearing. Council Thieson, question for administration?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. Wally, just going back to the vehicle wash major versus minor, if it was a four-bay car wash and a vehicle wash minor prior to this, why is it now vehicle wash major? Why the change in designation?
So, Mr. Mayor, it wouldn't actually be entitled for the legally non-conforming status because the site has been decommissioned for more than six months. So that's why it lost this status, and the case is always, since the adoption of the existing bylaw, there is a distinction between car wash, including up to two bays, and anything above. Above two, it's automatically considered major, which is not compatible with the CC land use district that is the case now, which is the CC, the subject site. The zone for it is CC now, and that's why the applicant was not able to have the two uses that he would like to have, namely, the land mat, as well as what could, what is considered or categorized as major car wash.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thanks, Council Thieson. I don't see anybody else link you with questions for administration, so I will close the public hearing and move on to business arising. If I could have a motion for first reading, Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-65, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. I will call for the vote on first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-65.
Thanks, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anybody in the queue? No? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1260-65 at this meeting.
Okay, as with the previous example, this is a motion to have third and final reading here tonight, and it must pass unanimously. Any discussion or debate to the merits of having third reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can move on to third reading. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-65, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote. Cue, and that motion carries. Councilor Rice, you had some business arising?
I do. I wonder if it would be appropriate to refer this policy to our next council strategic planning workshop. You know, it seems to me if a site's been empty for more than six months, we should be extremely happy that it's being filled rather than putting this obstacle in the way, so it would be an interesting discussion. I would ask that you consider putting that on the agenda for our next strategic planning session.
There may actually be some requirements under provincial law with regard to zoning that, with the six months not being under use, and maybe administration could clarify that for us. You just have to turn your microphone on. You'll just have to turn your microphone on.
It's, it's under the municipal government act, where it's coming from the time, which is six months. It's basically specified in the MG.
New one or old one?
The existing one. The, the new one was not adopted, did not, is not finalized yet, so, but I don't even think that this point is being considered for the new one.
Yeah, I think that's the case, so this is likely out of, out of our hands. Thanks for raising it, Council Rice, and thanks for that clarification from administration. We will move on, as noted earlier when we adopted the agenda, item 7.3, the West Industrial ASP and the Airport Industrial Outline Plan public hearing has been withdrawn. Again, if there was anybody that wished to speak to that or was interested in that topic, should it come back forward to council in the future, it would have to undergo the same mandatory public notification period and requirements, and so it would, before coming back, the public would be notified. So we'll move on into unfinished business, starting with item 8.1, bylaw C-1351, the borrowing bylaw for the Montrose Greenway concourse. Councilor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Since this came through Corporate Services, I'll be pleased to make the motions. I would move council give second reading to bylaw C-1351, being the borrowing bylaw for the Montrose Greenway concourse. In speaking to the motion, the amount is $1 million, in terms of the debenture, is $1,527,079. The total project cost is $2,402,079. The other funding is coming from property tax levy and reserves, but that is the amount that, that we, I think we had approved this in budget and admitted recommended borrowing as a source of funding. I know we did lose sometime a, a funding source in terms of a grant, and so this is how we're choosing to recommend funding this project now.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Open for discussion and debate on second reading. Councilor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question regarding the scope of the project that's under this bylaw. No, it's my understanding that there was also enough money within the bylaw to have the building demolished and parking built, is that...
We're talking about Montrose Greenway first.
Oh, sorry.
You're like me tonight, one went out of my head.
Yeah.
Looking at item 8.2. Nope, no worries, no worries, and we'll certainly deal with that now. Administration is ready for your question when it comes up. Any questions on the Montrose Greenway concourse borrowing? Council Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is actually just a question to our Corporate Services Director. In regards to the bylaw, point number four, I don't know why I never caught this before, but I think it kind of explains the wave that's been explained to me in the past, but it says the city of Grand Prairie shall levy and raise in each year municipal taxes sufficient to pay the indebtedness. To a certain degree, when I read that, it sort of implies that we have to raise taxes every single year to pay back our debtors. Is, is that true? Is this the wave? And on the biannual payments, how much are these payments to pay it off?
Mr. Anderson?
Mayor Given, this is a generic statement included in every borrowing bylaw, just to indicate that we will raise sufficient funds to repay the debt. As far as the, the payments go, it's approximately $125,000 per year.
Okay, and, sorry, just one more follow-up. Over the life cycle of the, of the, I guess, the borrowing, what would we end up paying on interest on, on the amount?
Mr. Anderson?
It's probably in the order of $400,000 or $500,000 over a 20-year period.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Council Thieson. Any discussion, further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give third reading to bylaw C-1351, being the borrowing bylaw for the Montrose Greenway concourse.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Open for discussion and debate. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to item 8.2. Council Adburn, do you want to do that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give second reading to bylaw C-1352, being the borrowing bylaw for the Grand Prairie Public School District administration building purchase and redevelopment. So, this is, actually, this came, I believe, from, from Community Living Committee. The purchase price is $1,533,000, looking at $800,000 to get to the $2 million, whatever, and that is for, I guess, the redevelopment of the, of the site into a parking lot. Now, as I think Mr. Anderson has explained to us, obviously, that's not finalized yet. The council has made the final determination in terms of what will happen to that site, but this borrowing bylaw does give us some flexibility to move forward if and when we choose. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Adburn. Any questions, discussion or debate on this motion? Council Tarrant's indicating that that, that got it for him, so I don't see anybody else in the queue, and I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give third reading to bylaw C-1352, being the borrowing bylaw for the Grand Prairie Public School District administration building purchase and redevelopment. Just before I, I finished, I forgot to mention that, you'll notice that we can do this in, in a different way. We had to table the first reading, and then there was a period of advertising to the public with respect to this borrowing bylaw, and so tonight we can just do second and third readings. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Councilor Adburn. The other thing, I think, just in terms of process, because we don't do borrowing bylaws all the time, Mr. Anderson, my understanding is, can you confirm my understanding that administration won't necessarily borrow all of the funds that are proposed in the bylaw until those funds are required? Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor Given. We will borrow the $1.53 million to pay the school board off for the purchase of the building. The second amount would be borrowed only if needed, once council makes a final determination on what they wish to do with the site.
Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson. Any other discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and would take us to item 8.3, which is a motion to rescind policy 109, fees and charges for the fire protection services. I will just speak to this really briefly before we have a motion. Council, this may seem very, very familiar to you, because at our previous council meeting, we had a motion to amend bylaw, or to pass bylaw 1312A, which was an amendment to the fire services bylaw. At that time, we failed to also rescind policy 109, which is the fees and charges for fire protection services. So administration identified that we also had to formally take that motion, sorry, that action via motion to rescind policy 109. So if I can get a motion to rescind policy 109, please, Council O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I make a motion, I move that we rescind policy 109, the fees and charges for fire protection services.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? Council Rice?
When we passed bylaw 1312A, before it gets to us, have we run it by legislator? Has CLT run it by legislative services? Because if they did, wouldn't they have said, "Pass this bylaw and get rid of this policy" at the same time?
I know that the bylaw has gone through administration and legislative services. I think the, from the committee level, the motion was, was made with an "and further rescind policy 109," and I think that just maybe didn't make it in the translation to the council meeting package last time. So that second step didn't make it last time.
So, but we have, I don't know, a process or a policy or whatever that, before CLT brings stuff to us that goes through legislative services to make sure we're doing it...
Legislative services certainly writes up the council package, Council Rice, and so I'm certain that they did see it. I think it just was a matter of it getting missed, either in the way that the motion was made at council, or maybe what was written in the agenda package that council follows, so. Any other, sorry, do we have our vote on that one? No, we didn't. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or debate on the motion to rescind policy 109? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that will bring us to item 9.1, under our reports section, which is development permit PL-160252, request for extension... Permit PL 160252, Request for Extension to Conditions of Approval. This is a little bit unique in that council is acting as the development authority in this situation. Often, we'll handle these at the committee level, and so you'll have to excuse me, council, if maybe this isn't quite as smooth. I'll certainly look to administration to help us out with an introduction to this. And I have a question when admin is introducing this, of whether or not there's an opportunity for presentations or submissions from the applicant. At the committee level, we would have that opportunity, I'm just not certain since it's not a formal public hearing, if we have that opportunity here tonight. So if you could maybe speak to that when you intro the topic. Administration?
Thank you, Mayor Given and council. For people watching at home, I'm Matt Els, Development Officer, too. So we're here about the development permit for the Cairn. I believe council is familiar with this project. The subject property is, just a second. Just getting our little laser pointer. Okay, so the subject property is the property highlighted in blue in the picture on the left, and the property outlined in yellow in the picture, in the picture on the right. The site is Zone DC 14, and as Mayor Given mentioned, council is the sole development authority for developments in the DC 14 district. Just a little bit of a background. In this past spring, development, this development permit PL 160252 approved the uses on the main floor, so a community outreach facility, the YMCA Cairn in-house supports, a medical office, retail store convenience, and vacant spaces that were intended to be health facilities as well. And the previously existing uses, they were recognized, but they were sort of bundled as one package. And those previous uses are the development units supported in the second through sixth stories, as well as the parking lot, the existing parking lot. So this development permit that we heard to, we heard about tonight was issued for the new parking lot, as well as the uses in the first floor. Condition, there are a number of conditions in the development permit that pertain to landscaping and paving works and fencing to be completed by specified dates. So I'll go through each of those conditions. Condition six states that paving, curbing, and line painting of the new parking lot is to be completed by no later than September 30th of this year. And obviously, that has passed. Condition seven requires a solid board, 1.8 meter or six-foot high fence between the Cairn building and the adjacent property to the north by no later than July 31st of 2016, as well as goodwill measure to complete a fence along the rear property line of the adjacent property. And condition eight requires four trees and a grassed area in the easterly portion of the new, new parking lot, no, no later than October 31st of 2016, which is approaching quite fast. And condition 10 requires nine trees along the city boulevard, no later than October 31st, 2016. So a little bit of an update with the compliance, on the compliance of those conditions. Condition six, which requires the paving, curbing, and line painting, no work to date has commenced on that. The applicant who is here tonight has advised that the paving will not be possible this year. And therefore, the applicant has requested that council amend this condition to complete the paving by no later than August 31st of 2017. Condition seven, that being the fence between the Cairn and the adjacent property, that has been completed, and that is shown in the, the top picture on this slide, right here. And a little extra measure was also done for, we call it an end cap, between the fence that was that fence and the adjacent residence. The fence that was encouraged as a goodwill measure along the rear property line of that adjacent property was also completed, and that is shown on the bottom picture of this, of this slide. Conditions eight and 10 for landscaping, the development permit, as stated previously, requires completion by October 31st. No work has commenced to date. The applicant has submitted a letter dated today that he will not be able to complete the landscaping by the required deadline, as contrary to the, to administration's report. Therefore, the applicant is also requesting an extension to these deadlines stated in conditions eight and 10. So council has a number of alternatives available to them. They can amend conditions six, eight, and 10 of this development permit to allow the completion of the required paving, curbing, line painting, and the landscaping works by no later than August 31st, or an earlier date that council deems appropriate. Council can direct administration to issue a fine for noncompliance with the development permit, and allow an extension for compliance with these conditions. Or council can deny the time extension request, and if, if council chooses that route, council would direct administration to issue a stop order to immediately cease the use of the first-floor uses until such time that the works are completed to the city's satisfaction. For stakeholder engagement, notices of tonight's public meeting were sent to the adjacent landowners and persons who submitted written comments, signed a petition, or attended previous council meetings on May 16th and May 30th. Our recommendation, we don't have a recommendation per se. We, we were just asking council to give administration direction on which route to take, to amend the conditions of the development permit, issue a stop order, or impose a fine as determined by council. And that's, that's it for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for administration at this time? Any questions for administration? I don't see anybody ringing in. So I think if we were at the committee and acting as development authority at the committee, this would be the time where we'd ask if there's anybody here to speak in favor of the application. So certainly, if the applicant wished to come forward, now would be the time to do that. It's a bit more formal than at committee, but if we follow the same sort of process, if you had to introduce yourself for a recording secretary, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given and council. As you just heard, I'm here tonight to ask for an extension of some of the conditions that were put in place for our development permit. We were hopeful to be able to finish most, if not all, of those things this year. Another number of items got in our way, and then we were currently planning to be able to finish the landscaping for sure this year, which is due October 31st coming up. But the early start to winter, I think, is going to cause us to not be able to complete that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the Cairn development or the conditions.
Okay, now opportunity for council to ask the applicant, any questions? Any questions? Council Radburn? Sorry, although many of us know, since you've been here before, you are indeed Mr. Cameron?
I'm sorry, yeah. Brad Cameron with the Cairn building.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Mr. City Manager, for reminding me. Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Cameron, the August 31st, 2017 date, is that a lot work?
I think so. We actually have contracts in place with contractors to get the work completed. The landscaping contract was in place in July, and they were actually prepaid and ran into some issues along the way, and then just didn't, didn't get after it. I, I was, well, unfortunately, or lucky to be away, volunteer coaching through the month of August, so I wasn't really available to them to keep that process moving forward. So I'm confident that one moved forward. The other one is the paving. And as you understand from your previous report, paving can be quite expensive. We were having trouble funding that. We've currently started working more closely with Community Futures, as well as private individual, and we feel that we have the funds in place for that and contract with the same contractor to finish that work as soon as they can in, in the spring, summer timeframe. So yes, I'm quite confident we'll have it done.
Thank you. Council Rice?
I have some concerns about that length of an extension. That means we're going to go through all next spring and next summer with unpaid property, and, and it will be an annoyance to the neighborhood. And, and we were, I think we, yourself, ourself, really reached out to that neighborhood to make sure they're comfortable with what's happening there. And I can't believe that an unpaid chunk of property there is going to make them very happy. So is there any way that timeframe could be tightened up?
Mr. Cameron?
Mayor Given, Council Rice, I think it would be our intention to finish it as soon as possible in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue. No further questions for Mr. Cameron? Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Mr. Cameron, thanks very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
As we would at a committee when acting as development authority, is there anybody else who wish to speak in opposition to the proposed request for time extension? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? I don't see anybody coming forward. Is there anyone who wish to speak to this matter in either case? Seeing nobody else coming forward, I'd look to council for motions rising. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council, as the development authority, direct administration to amend condition six of the development permit PL 160252 to require completion of paving, curbing, and line painting for the parking lot at 10127, 10131, at 105th Ave, by no later than August 31st, 2017.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Clayton. I just had one question for administration on that. Were there two conditions of the, of the approval that are required, that we require to give an extension, the landscaping and the paving?
Mayor Given, yes. Conditions eight and 10 will also need to be amended to extend those dates to August 31st, 2017 as well.
Okay, so, and, and Council Clayton took it as it was in our package, absolutely. So Council Clayton, was your intent to do condition six, eight, and 10?
Six, seven...
I think it's six, eight, and 10.
Oh, seven's already done, so yeah, six, eight, and 10.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Clayton, for that clarification. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that handles all of our reports business, and we move into committee business, starting with item 10.1, Council O'Toole and the Pursuit of Excellence Committee, from October 3rd. Council O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council received the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held Monday, October 3rd, 2016, as presented.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to catch? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Council O'Toole, anything you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, I've got a couple highlights here. We started off the year with a little over $40,000, and we gave out a number of funding requests for either coaching or athlete development, or travel to a number of different sports and athletes. And we also gave some money out on behalf of the, the, what is it? Clinic hosting funding on behalf of, which one is that now? Anyhow, two, it slips my mind right now, but it's 1,100, $11,000 to the Academy Ballet for a workshop holding, being held later in the earlier next year. And the fellow that's putting on the clinic is a renowned artist. He's got his own TV show here in CTV, I think it is. He'll be doing a formal presentation to a number of different dance studios throughout Northern Alberta and BC, so it's a good start. Just another one here, $1,100, sorry. I was bifocals, and at my age, I'm just lucky, I can see out of my glasses right now. There's a number of different sports, like I said, Come Fly With Me funding, we gave some money out as well there. And, but I do have one announcement to make. We've got a, an event to promote the winners of some outstanding achievement, and that will be held, help me out here, fellows. Yes, 27th. I got an iPad and an iPhone, and I still can't find the information here, so.
Maybe that's why.
Yeah, there you go. Techno, techno whiz I'm not. Thank you. But it will be held, and we're going to have a short little program with some honored guests on behalf, the, the names of the trophies, scholarships are named after. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. And I think that'd be the Perky McCullough Scholarship and the Bob Newfeld Scholarship. And so recognizing the, this year's recipients of those two scholarships?
Correct.
Excellent, great. And, oh, and the Come Fly With Me, the recipient of the Come Fly With Me, which was the legacy fund that Ryan Blay had started. Excellent. Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. We will vote on the adoption of those minutes. Let's vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to 10.2, Community Growth Committee. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Meeting held Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, as presented.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Clayton, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Not in particular, thanks.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton. We'll move to 10.3, Community Living Committee Meeting. Council Terren?
Mayor Given, I will move the minutes of the Community Living Committee Meeting held on Tuesday, October 4th.
Thanks very much, Council Terren. Any discussion or debate on the Community Living Committee minutes? Anything, anything we need to change or change? Go ahead, Council Terren.
Yeah, I did actually have one, one item that I just wanted to clarify before the minutes were approved, and it was in regards to a motion you had made on, in item 2.2, and it was directing administration to develop a definition of a large-scale tourism event. Just wondering, there, there was no, I know there was a lot of talk at committee about a policy. Now, was this, was that your intent to just start with the definition, which would lead into a policy?
Yeah, that was absolutely the discussion that we had at the committee, was to say, we first need to understand if there's something that we could define, and what that might look like, and then discuss whether, what kind of policy might be appropriate around that, or program might be appropriate. But first, to see if we could all get to a common understanding of what a large-scale tourism event might be.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are any other, no other discussion or debate on the minutes, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Terren, anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
I have a couple of...
Oh, sorry, you have business rising. My apologies. An important one, 10.3.1.
So I would, just want to just double-check, make sure that that's the same one that's I have here. Where am I here? So I will move that council adopt the Grand Prairie Area Joint Recreation Master Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Terren. Any discussion or debate on the, on the motion? Council Terren, would you like to introduce it?
Yes, so I'll go a bit further. This is a plan that's come about through quite a bit of consultation with municipalities in the region, as well as a number of stakeholders, whether it's sports groups, recreation groups, the public... the public, and this plan has been, gosh, been almost, I think, a year and a half in the works. And I think we've come to a pretty good understanding of the recreation needs in, in the region, and look forward to, to working with the county and other regional partners in developing and adopting a lot of the items that are within this plan. I think it speaks also to the testament of regional, regional collaboration, and, and the fact that we're working as a region and have an intent to, to continue working with them to develop recreation services in the area.
So, thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Tarrant?
And one further motion coming out was that I move that council direct the mayor to coordinate a joint invitation with the REVE of, of the county to invite the Municipal District of Greenview, the Town of Wembley, the Town of Beaver Lodge, the Village of Hype, and the Town of Sexsmith to be part of a joint recreation area recreation committee. And just speaking to the motion, I think it's quite self-evident there, that we're, we're want to have a process in place for which we can make sure the plan gets adopted and gets implemented in a way that's consistent with what, what's in the plan and what municipalities in the area would like to see, and so have a joint committee, I think, is the way to go.
So, thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant, and certainly, just a recognition of the background of the plan, it was a collaborative effort between the City of Grand Prairie and the County of Grand Prairie, and we received some funding from the province. And we both agreed that the recreation infrastructure in the other municipalities that weren't a party to that initial agreement was very important. As we went through the process, as Counselor Tarrant highlighted, we engaged them all the way through, and towards the end, as we've completed the plan, the municipalities agree that they had an interest, and we're just sort of waiting for a formal invitation to, to essentially be at the decision-making table. And so I appreciate this recommendation, and has, this has been previously discussed with the County of Grand Prairie, and so I believe that they'll be making a similar motion today as well. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, oh, Counselor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd just add to, to that comment, another motion made at committee was to direct administration to work with the County of Grand Prairie, and to develop a terms of reference for administrative body to support the ongoing work of the Joint Recreation Committee. That's another important piece of the puzzle, and actually, the motion that was made tonight by Counselor Tarrant, and this one that was made by committee, were part of the two, two of the recommendations made to us to move the Joint Recreation Master Plan forward.
Thank you, Counselor Edburn. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counselor Tarrant, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
There was just a couple other items that council, or the committee is looking into, and you can see there, one is regards to flowers and annual flower planting, and to see if there's opportunities to expand that program. And the other one, as previously mentioned, was the large, large-scale tourism event, and coming up with the definition of that, which may lead into a policy.
I see Counselor Clayton might have a question for you, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Clayton?
Mayor Given, I just had a question for Counselor Tarrant in regards to the Joint Recreation Master Plan. You may have mentioned it, but can you tell me again the sort of timeframe for implementation of the recommendations?
Counselor Tarrant?
I think the, the intent would that it would be ongoing, you know, in the short term, to guide all planning. I don't think there's any specific, you know, in terms of specific hard timelines, but, you know, certainly it's, you know, I think they were looking at a five, 10-year sort of outlay there.
And there also were, and Mr. Roth may have some additional information if there were that had any specific timelines, but there was also, at least one of the recommendations was that the partners in the Joint Recreation Master Plan develop a funding model for recreation facilities and services. And so the adoption of the plan would be the first step. The plan itself recommends that the municipalities, and first invite the others, the others, the towns and villages, as we're doing with that previous motion, and then secondly, that all the partners at the table have a discussion about developing a cost-sharing model to ensure that the costs of recreation infrastructure and planning of recreation infrastructure are shared equally amongst municipalities. I don't believe that there was a timeline specific to that, as Counselor Tarrant said, but I think that that was one of the key ones that would likely come in the early part of the, the development. Mr. Roth, do you have anything further to add?
Throughout the Recreation Master Plan, there are different timelines assigned to different, different goals and different objectives, anywhere from zero to five years, five to 10, or even be 10 years and beyond. So it really depends on the specific goals.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton, for the question, and thanks for the answer, Director Roth. Seeing nothing further for Community Living Committee, we'll move to 10.4, Counselor Thiessen and the Community Safety Committee Meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee Meeting held Tuesday, October 11th, 2016, at 10:00 a.m.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thi, Counselor Thiessen, that's oddly specific, including the actual time, but I will ask if there's any errors or amendments that we need to make before we adopt that set of minutes. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
A couple, a couple items coming out of that. The first one being the reallocation of crime prevention funds to the Cultural Integration Academy, and I would move that council, or recommend that council approve the reallocation of approved crime prevention funds in the amount of $85,050 to the Cultural Integration Academy for the 2017, 2018 budget. And speaking to this, the, the shift of the funds is largely coming from the Safe Growth Matching Grant Program, which would effectively, with this vote passing, would eliminate the Safe Growth Matching Grant for next year, unless there's further motions coming up around budget, but that's where the majority of the funds are coming to continue this program.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Open for discussion or debate, Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question in that, so the, it's coming from the Safe Growth Grants, so are we not awarding any grants for next year, is that?
That, that is correct. The recommendation came forward from administration to try to continue the program, and they saw an opportunity through the Safe Growth Matching Grant Program, where they had a lot of funds where they could continue this program for at least another cycle. And in regards to why administration felt that we could sacrifice such a program is just in regards to a number of video surveillance camera requests that are coming through that program, and, and they figured that they could do just the same with site-specific design recommendations by making visits to different areas and seeing how they could open it up through development.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Just additionally, at the committee meeting, the committee was not satisfied at this point with making the decision to not proceed with the Safe Growth Matching Grant Program. The committee did direct administration to look at potential alternate funding sources. An update would come at the next committee meeting. At that time, the committee could either refer additional funding to the budget if we wished to continue the Safe Growth Matching Grant Program. So, again, this is trying to line things up as we go into our budget review in November. I would hope to have an opportunity to just still discuss the Safe Growth Matching Grant Program. But of note, the initial cost, the initial expense, or sorry, the initial cost to extend the program was, if I'm going by memory, $122,000, and administration, by cost savings in other areas, in addition to the Safe Growth Matching Grant, managed to prioritize and reduce costs in a number of other areas, which they're able to shift over to supporting the Cultural Integration Academy Program. So it was a balance of cost savings and prioritization of programs, and administration's recommendation was, rather than giving grants to private businesses to support the Cultural Integration Academy Program, council will get a chance to decide whether we wish to add additional money to support the Safe Growth Matching Grant Program, so.
Just, if I may add, Mayor Given, just something that was given through the email channels, we did direct administration to apply for funding through the Provincial Proceeds of Crime Funds, and shortly after that, we received word that because it's a granting program, we wouldn't qualify underneath the Provincial Proceeds of Crimes Funds to, to utilize that money to grant it out to organizations within our community.
And that information would come back at a committee meeting, so we could discuss the, the previous program. Counselor Tarrant?
I mean, this is fairly substantial to, you know, we're talking about elimination of a program, potentially. Just wondering if I could get some more information on the Safe Growth Grant Program in terms of stats for this year? Was, was it completely, all the money was allocated?
Director Glante, can you speak to the Safe Growth Matching Grant Program?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. The 2016 funding for Safe Growth has been allocated, almost in full, and the Crime Prevention Department analyzes, analyzes on a regular basis the effectiveness and the overall impact on the community, on the different programs they run. And the decision to set priorities and shift some funding to CIA versus Safe Growth is because of that, is the impact on the community. And there are other measurements other than the Safe Growth Matching Grant. There is currently 1.5 position, FTE positions working on this. There is a reduction, just to one FTE. That is the reason of the reduction from 125,000 to 85,000, plus advertisement, rental, graffiti programs, other consulting services, some speakers, et cetera, that when you adapt, everything is 85,000, that we're going to take from this account into the CIA in order to continue the program. There will be an opportunity for sure to, to discuss this if council wishes that, but the, the main goal to maintain this program is due to the effectiveness and the overall impact on the community.
Thanks, Director Glante. Counselor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, just a clarification, should the, should the motion read for the 2017 and 2018 budgets? Or, or was, was the motion just for next year? So that's...
Counselor Edburn? Director Glante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The original motion referred to an ongoing basis that was amended as a suggestion of our city manager during the Community Safety Committee. The funds will be built into base budget, however, the full budget is approved until 2018. So the idea of 2017 and 18 means built into the base budget.
That's right. So it seems... So the intent of the motion is specifically for the two budget years?
Correct. It seems appropriate, because then we'll have a new four-year budget cycle, and we can, council can look at it again.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Edburn. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and I'll just say that, Counselor Tarrant, I shared your concern about the, the Safe Growth Grants Program. It was, I think, was appreciated by, by the community and was well-used. I'm interested in seeing if there's a way to support that, and would look forward to having that discussion at, at our budget discussions. So I expect that we'll see that come back through the committee process when administration comes back with the information that Counselor Thiessen referenced. So I, at this point, this is, does council support administration's recommendation of how they were going to retool the existing funds within the budget? And I expect we'll have another conversation about the Safe Growth Matching Grant prior to the start of 2017. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be voting against the motion. I feel that back when we approved the, the budget a couple years ago, it was definitely a priority for me, the Safe Growth Grants, and I think that the community has really adopted them and, and really, you know, taken hold of them, and I think the numbers speak for themselves that they are well-used, and I think that they're, you know, the stats are there, that they are, you know, there is a level of effectiveness there. And I would like to see that program continue, and I would like to see it go on. In regards to the CIA program, I would rather see that one presented to us at budget and have that discussed at, at that point, rather than this other way around.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen, I think you wanted to talk about salt.
Because we are the salt of the earth, and we need a lot of it here in Grand Prairie. Yes, I would like to talk about Bulk Highway Salt, and I would move that council award tender T-78-546-16 Bulk Highway Salt to NSC Minerals Limited in the amount of $329,880.60 exclusive of GST, as the lowest bid meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate? Director Glante, I had somebody ask me, I referenced over the course of the weekend, there's lots of questions about salt, and how much salt does the city have, and how much does the city put on? And I referenced the fact that we were buying $329,000 worth of salt. I don't know whether you have this at hand, because it wasn't in the committee report. How much salt do we get for $329,000? Wasn't, it wasn't in the committee report, and you don't, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have the amount of tons of salt for this amount of funding.
Okay, no, that's fine, I thought, I'm, I'm glad that I didn't miss it out of the committee report, it just wasn't there.
I, I actually believe that Robert Carroll had mentioned that it was about 300 tons of salt. I actually wrote it in here, but I could be wrong.
Well, maybe, maybe we'll get that, and we can just get that by email and confirm that, just in general interest, how much salt do you get for $329,000? Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's a lot of those little packets. Imagine if somebody had to open up all those and dump them into a...
They'd be getting overtime.
That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen, anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
No, it was, it was a very, very great community safety meeting, but it, it really revolved around the discussion here tonight, the Safe Growth Matching Grants and, and the CIA program, and the validity of both. But other than that, and Bulk Highway Salt, there's nothing else discussed at committee, so I'm done.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So we'll move on. We have no more committee business, we had no items of correspondence. I believe our delegation business for the proclamation was handled. Maybe we could have motion receive the update from Superintendent, was our superintendent, Counselor Thiessen?
I was so moved.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate? I will call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. We have no notice of motion, so it'll take us to council member reports, and we'll start off with the library board. Counselor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just some highlights from our October 11th Grand Prairie Library Board meeting. We tabled a draft budget until next, until next month, so we'll know more information relative to the recommendation of administration relative to their budget to council. We reviewed and updated policies on meeting use room, tangible capital assets and donations, and our planning committee of the board is working on some advocacy get-togethers. One is with school boards, one is with the county library board, and also, I believe, our chair and, and director meeting with Mayor Given, read the scores agreement. I think we're just, we're continuing to look for partnerships, and so I think that's, that's a wise action. And finally, we did have some discussion on pressure points to guide the plan of services in the future, both service and facilities, and so that will, we get good information as we move forward with our new plan of service. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edburn. I think we had Peace Airshed Zone Board of Directors update. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yes, you did. On October 4th, the Peace Airshed Zone Association, otherwise known as PAZA, met collectively at the Encana Building. Just a couple highlights from that meeting. We received a few updates on our discussions with Alberta Health Services, and in, in regards to PAZA taking on an advisory and impact-related educational campaign. The information that was presented to Alberta Health Services came back to us, where they said that PAZA is not in the business of recommending health measures, so we are moving forward on a different education campaign, and working closely with Alberta Health Services to make sure we don't cross lines that we're not allowed to cross. Also, PAZA representation and representatives are, are busy advocating for policy change in the province in consultation with the Municipal Government Act in order to clarify the role of municipalities in air quality monitoring. Currently, the report we got around the board is that industry that sits around the table is mandated, municipalities are not, so we're looking for more clarification from the provincial government in that regards. And finally, also talking about the province, we received an update on $93,000 outstanding amount owing from the province. We had talked with Alberta Environment and Parks to confirm that the payments of outstanding invoices from AMIRA are still forthcoming, and they are, so the budget for now is good. And outside of educating 1,100 kids... And outside of educating 1,100 kids down at Wapiti Nordic Ski Trails on why airsheds are important and air monitoring is important, that is all I have from the Peace Airshed Zone Association.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen, so we'll start, unless there were any external agency boards or commission reports, we'll start council member roundtable with councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just have one announcement to make in regards to the last couple of weeks. I served dinner with the Rotary Club, but it was for the Sisters and Spirits Event at the Friendship Center, and it was a packed house and it was a very nice, thoughtful, they started with a candlelight vigilant walk earlier in the day, and then they went to the Friendship Center and had a really nice ceremony. So I wanted to thank them for putting on a great event. Everybody that attended was thoroughly touched and, and it was a very special ceremony, so thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Well, over to councillor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. There was a couple of events attended. There was an MMA event here last Friday night, and that was very well-attended, definitely better attended than the, the one in July. And so great for, for local tourism and the economics behind us for that. On the, on Saturday night, was able to attend, the Archives had barn dance out at the Country Roads RV Park and good time was had by all. And there was a good amount of money raised for the, for the Archives in their support, and sorry, and this was put on by the friends of the Archives. So the fundraising arm that raises money and, and everything was going towards the, the new building that will be there at some point.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant, councillor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just three quick things, I attended the Breakfast with the Boys event, and again, a good turnout and kind of that, we're down in Halvers at the Grand Prairie College and it's, it's annually now a packed house. I also attended the City Furniture 40th Anniversary Wine and Cheese, so, and actually councillor Thiessen joined me at that event. And it was just great to recognize longstanding family businesses in our, in our city. And so it was a nice chance to recognize the Sandu family for, for their business. They've expanded their tentacles, so to speak, to a number of areas in, in the Pice, BC and Alberta northern areas. And finally, I joined councillor Tarrant at the Highland Park Neighbourhood Association Fall Event. Nice to see our, our neighbourhood associations being active, engaging their community with a fun family event. So kudos to the Highland Park Neighbourhood Association. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Redburn, councillor Tool?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I attended a number of events over the last couple of weeks. One of them was the AUMA convention, and there was a number of workshops that I attended there. Couple highlights at that event, that event was the minister with Brian Mason. And we had a half hour of time with him to talk about some concerns that we had as a municipality and the region. And we, I also attended the Northern Alberta Mayors and Reeves Meeting on behalf of yourself. Some of the topics that we discussed were public engagement, that some of the issues that the city of Edmonton has had over the years. And what they presumed, or presumed was a good engagement turned out to be not exactly what they wanted, so they've reestablished the guidelines to what actual public engagement is. And also with the brownfield development, brownfield development is a, is an issue or a concern with all municipalities and to some of the concerns that they've had. And also we got to have a little bit of an executive look at the Blatchford redevelopment project that the city has. And those are my highlights.
Thanks very much councillor Tool, councillor Rice?
Thank you. I attended the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association Convention where I was pleased to be awarded a Lifetime Achievement Award. And I attended the meeting with Minister Mason, I found it a really delightful meeting. I thought it was a really positive feeling in that room, so. I attended a meeting with the city manager, Greg Sherback, our one-on-one meeting. Attended the meeting with Aqua Terra. And I attended the Wild Rose Manor Resident Appreciation Evening, and what a, what a wonderful job. The staff is to be commended for just setting the, a real atmosphere of community within that facility, so.
Thanks very much councillor Rice.
Oh wait, one more thing, sorry. I just want to call to council's attention that in 2016, Alberta Recycling Management Authority passed the mark of recycling 100 million tires. And they are used in playgrounds, splash parks, sidewalks and municipal landfill projects. And then, and obviously a lot more. What really makes me proud was when the, it was then called the Tire Recycling Board was first formed, they had what they called the unfunded liability. That meant all over the place in municipal landfills, there were tires that had been piling up since before they started to collect the levees. So it was difficult to find money to recycle those. And we, as Northern Care, an organization formed to do regional recycling in our part of the world, did the first grant with the then Tire Recycling Board, and they removed 100,000 tires from Northern Alberta landfills at no cost to the municipality. That was their first big project. So they've, they've certainly, you know, did right by us as people now that can remember, you know, if you get a pile of tires that catches on fire, it's, it's ugly for weeks, so that's it, thank you.
Thanks councillor Rice. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a few to highlight, I did have notes here to say on October 16th, which was yesterday, we were out in Sexmouth for the 100 Years of Rail Coming to the Region Celebration, hosted by the town of Sexmouth. Councillors Tarrant, Redburn, Clayton and myself were all in attendance with the mayor, who was giving greetings on behalf of the city. I thought it was a well-put-together event and lots of good historical speeches, gave a lot of good context about how this region grew and where we grew from. So thank you very much to the town of Sexmouth for putting that together. On October 15th, I was invited to LibraCon to be a cosplay judge with Shane from the Halloween Store and Rachel from Today FM. I'm not sure who won, because I ran out of there to try to get to the Neighbourhood Association, but all the costumes there were really, really great and I had a lot of, a lot of fun sitting with those two characters. Also, the Raising the Archives, I just wanted to give kudos to a great event there. It was well-attended, we filled the barn, people are dancing and people are bidding really, really high on stuff, so there's a lot of support within that community for the Archives. I also wanted to extend a congratulations to little Benjamin Tarrant for being the best-dressed little cowpoke and winning gold-plated maple leaf to pin on his shirt or Christmas tree in the future. So congratulations to little Benji Tarrant. Finally, I also attended the Alberta Urban Municipalities, I guess, Conference and, and Trade Show from October 5th to 7th, a couple highlights there. I was not in attendance when council spoke with Minister Mason, as I was speaking on behalf of the municipalities on a panel for Housing Your Community. So I sat with federal and provincial funders and the municipality as well, and then a community-based organization, which a big highlight for me was local prodigy Jamie Rogers. She used to work within the city of Grand Prairie. I gave an outstanding presentation on why community-based organizations are important and the work that she's done in Medicine Hat in, in humanizing the homelessness issue and really solving it out there. So kudos to her. I thought it was in church, there were so many yeses and amens from the crowd that was in attendance, and I'm not, not even exaggerating, it was, it was pretty awesome and we were all really proud to hear her presentation. Finally, a big, big congratulations to our crime prevention program. It was a big highlight for me, seeing councillor Helen Rice and Karen Garpey from the Crime Prevention Program going up and receiving award at the, at the conference for, for the program of crime prevention that they put on here in Grand Prairie. Made me proud that we were able to receive that municipal affairs award and, and help Helen Rice up the stage. Thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Thiessen. I'll just cover a couple of items. First, from the AUMA Conference, which a number of council members have mentioned. I just wanted to highlight the session that I attended on Indigenous relations. The city of Edmonton is doing fantastic work there, and there was a, a great speaker from the city of Edmonton, and I know I was speaking with Mr O'Longer, who was in attendance as well, and said, boy, that's something that we've got to get up, because they really put Aboriginal and Indigenous relations in context of sort of the legal framework that I think we're used to dealing with in a very concise and accessible way. And it was really an eye-opener for me, and I think for everybody who was in attendance. And so I think that that sort of highlighted the importance of the AUMA Conference that brings these topics where we get to rely and learn on, rely on the expertise of other municipalities that have more experience in a certain area than us. And that was highlighted with that session for me. I also just wanted to highlight, on Thursday, the 13th, I was at the Philip J Curry Dinosaur Museum for a Canadian Chamber of Commerce Dinner. The Canadian Chamber of Commerce brought a delegation from Quebec of economic development people, Chamber of Commerce people and other organizations from Quebec to Alberta to see what the resource industry and resource development looks like in Alberta. The delegation first visited Fort McMurray, Wood Buffalo area, to see the oil sands operations, then they were here in the Grand Prairie region to see the Seven Generations Energy Operations south of the city. We had dinner that night and then they were down off to TransCanada Pipeline's Control Centre in Calgary, their pipeline control center in Calgary, so that they had an opportunity to gain an understanding of the variety of types of oil and gas industry in Alberta, from oil sands to natural gas development, which as we know are very, very different, to the level of expertise and professionalism that goes into operating pipelines. And I just really wanted to thank the Canadian Chamber of Commerce and our local Chamber of Commerce for organizing that opportunity. There's a lot of discussion at the dinner that these kind of dialogues will be important in finding an appropriate way to move forward on a national project like pipelines. And there was some discussion that maybe FCM Conference would be a good opportunity to do that, to bring communities together with different perspectives in dialogue about how we might move forward. So I certainly appreciated having the opportunity to attend that. And with that, I think I'll call our meeting adjourned.